I'll call the meeting to order, please rise for the budget regents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May thirty first meeting.
Any public comments? Seeing none. Did the other commissioners have a chance to review the minutes from last meeting?
Yes, sir.
And I will second that, all in favor say aye. Aye passes two to zero with one abstention. Commissioner comments and committee reports.
Um, yeah, I wanted to, I know it's in the minutes from last week and we brought it up. That House Bill twenty one thirty six, but since Commissioner Bauer wasn't here and he had brought it up this morning in workshop, I just want to reiterate. That I believe us as county commissioners have a great responsibility to the people of Atchison County as the three of us represent every single person that resides in our cities, in our townships, or in the rural areas. The state on the governor's desk will give us authority as a county if we want to submit a question to the voters to impose a sales tax of one percent for the purpose of funding joint law enforcement, communications, and solid waste disposal. The tax would not be subject to apportionment with the cities of Atchison County and it would require it to expire in not more than ten years. So I think it's important, so many people don't pay attention or understand the sales tax. And currently, we have a countywide sales tax with no sunset. It is a great asset to Atchison County to have that. We, I use twenty twenty one for comparison purposes to let you know that that sales tax last year in twenty twenty one generated two million, six hundred and forty two thousand, ninety dollars and forty four cents. I pulled that information together in a spreadsheet to just try to show the public. As a commissioner, I want transparency and I want to tell you guys what you're spending your money on. So you have a one percent countywide sales tax that is currently being brought back into the county through an apportionment formula that's based on population. And the ratios, I, nobody really cares about that, it's all about the dollars. But just to let you know, we generated two point six million. That would allow us to fund joint communications, which last year our budget was one million, ninety thousand, two twenty three, and solid waste was eight hundred and ninety thousand, four seventy five budget. So what that does is generating income for all of Atchison County to pay for two critical services. And it left, if we were doing it correctly, that would leave six hundred and sixty one thousand, three ninety two, forty four approximately to utilize for needs in Atchison County. So although the state's giving us authority to put it on a ballot and vote for it and bypass the city apportionment rate so that we can have the money, because the rub is historically, the money gets funneled into the cities and then should be funneled back to pay for these services, and that is not happening. So there's been a rubs. So since then, there's been a resolution, and this is where the rub comes from business owners. Because ever since this House bill passed, I've gotten phone calls from big business owners that reside in the city, live in the county, have businesses in the city that generate a lot of this tax. They're frustrated, they're, they're paying a sales tax and they're getting charged a tipping fee with their solid waste that goes to our landfill because we, we enacted a resolution with a tipping fee twenty fifteen fourteen oh three. Three commissioners that are no longer sitting here, but it's a county resolution for the tipping fee. So business owners are frustrated about that. I would like to see us as county commission, sit down, devise a plan, how do we help the people? How do we help the business owners? Do we rescind this resolution, cut the tipping fees out? Well, the tipping fees were put in place to, in addition to sales tax commitments, the resolution established a tipping fee for supplemental revenue for operations of the Atchison County's, County Solid Waste Department. This happened because we weren't getting enough money to pay for it through going through the cities and funneling back to the county. So my thing is, what can we do as county commissioners representing every single person in this county to do what's right by the people, to utilize the sales tax already in place without having to put another one out there? And if we rescind this and get rid of the tipping fees, well, there just might need to have some additional revenue from the sales tax put to our solid waste facility. But I just believe that in order for the county, Atchison County to make progress, I think we need to do this together. I think we need to do this in a planning session where we sit down, we look at our options, and at the end of the day, we are acting in the best interest of the people. And the people that aren't paying attention also, like, it seems like there's only a handful of people that have really followed this. Okay, handful times three, but that have followed this along the way, that are really passionate about it one way or another. But for the phone calls I'm getting from business owners that are frustrated, they're paying tipping fees and sales tax, that seems like us three could take care of that really easy by just rescinding a resolution for tipping fees, doing away with it and letting the sales tax pay for it. And if we don't get enough sales tax to pay for it as we should, well, then that will be another discussion for the public to understand. But I think if we can educate and if we can sit down and devise where the county is going and what our plan is, it is a much better situation and scenario for the people than just throwing a ballot question out there that people won't understand the ramifications. And I am nervous that the people in the rural communities outside of the cities, even though we're trying to bypass the cities with the new sales tax, I think it's the people outside of that that are gonna feel it. So that's my opinion only. I, I hope people have questions, I hope they talk to all three of us, because like I said in the beginning, we represent every single person in the county and we want to do what's right by the people. We want to utilize the money that's already coming into Atchison County for what it was originally intended for. And then you know what, if we pay for those services and have left over, then let's, let's keep going, because we know there's needs in, in Atchison County, so.
Do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Well, I have to address a little bit of that, just because there's been, over the years, committees and countless attempts to correct the situation. And the resolution, if you just dismiss it or, or vote it down and, and take it away, there is nothing to compel any of the cities of the third class or the first class to give a penny more or any of the current sales tax. So wishing that to happen, I mean, it just won't happen because we rescind it. They can choose not, not to give us any more money, or they can choose not to give us any of the sales tax money. So there is a flaw in the current system, because there's no way to even get what's budgeted back from the, the way it is, because there's no commitment to the joint communications and solid waste. So just rescinding that resolution without anything for sure to replace that money is will be shorthand. I mean, there's no, there's nothing to compel the city to give a penny more than they are.
So for the business owners that are frustrated about the tipping fees, who has authority over the tipping fees? We do, correct? I mean, the three, they were three county commissioners that signed them into place, so we could rescind the tipping fees.
So if the city doesn't comply and, and give more money, where's that, the tipping fee money, where's that gonna be made up at?
Well, and I'm, I'm not trying to put it into a city versus county, I'm just saying.
Well, no, but it will be a city versus county, so you're just saying it's a simple thing, you take away the, the tipping fee and they're gonna have to comply, there is nothing that will make the city give us a penny more and make up those revenues. Where are the revenues gonna come from if we rescind that?
Well, I feel like that would be a good discussion for us to sit and have with the new city manager.
Well, since there's ninety three when this all started, there's never been any commitment by the city to make up that difference. Matter of fact, I believe that the, the resolution to do for tipping fees was a suggestion by the city of Atchison to make more revenue so they wouldn't have to turn over as much sales tax, not in the reverse. So the way my understanding, it would be very short sighted to just rescind that without some commitment. And we have not been able to get any commitment from the city for years and years. And different, when I was on the sales tax committee board, we, I, I seen document after document of people from the county that were making attempts to get this fixed, and there's never been any close deals or even halfway measures to get this fixed, they, they choose not to. So that's my report today. Next new business for the board, first up is Kim Pruitt, like communications. We have a P O, an amount of six thousand, six hundred and seventy nine dollars and forty cents for the replacement of a compressor, blower motor, et cetera, for the radio building, which houses our joint communications vital radios and equipment. This is to Caston's Plumbing and Heating of Atchison. Any discussion, anybody? So do I hear a motion to accept the? Yes, I, I said that.
Isn't this, is this something for joint communications?
Yes.
And how much is this?
Six thousand, six hundred and seventy nine dollars.
No, it comes out of the joint communications budget.
It's a, yeah.
The budget that you guys were saying that we're.
Yeah, we had originally approved a new unit, which of course with the things that, that are now, we were not going to be able to get that unit until August at the earliest. And so they had to go back and we had to have a redundant system, so we ended up having to go with a new, or a new.
And there was a budget for do this air conditioning in the twenty twenty two budget.
It's.
Or is it coming from somewhere?
I think it's coming out of their capital outlet.
That's correct.
So do I hear a motion to accept the P O?
So much.
We're here a second. All second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Further discussion, I would just say I want to stick with having the new unit that we originally counted on. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
This past two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Atchison County Extension Budget Report. For rescheduling what originally it's assigned and as we have shared with the clerk's office, thank you, got some of the paperwork that you requested. Budget request, aspirations and not gonna cover all those documents as far as one of those would be what our program development committees set down, the different dimes, it's really kind of focused as far as what they want extension to be doing for the citizens of Atchison County Services and Education. So that's probably, as far as, as you said, aspirations, that's probably some of the goals of the extension. Yes, the board set and worked on the budget, looked on previous expenses, tried to be thinking to the future, what extension needs to be doing for the citizens of Atchison County Services. So those are presented and we'll certainly, we'll take the time that you want to, but I'm not gonna speak too much, we have representatives from the extension board, area director, Carla Neechek. Extension she drove in today and is here to answer questions as far as extension. Atchison County, what she's seeing for her area, she works eastern part of Kansas, but also, so Carla's on the end. Basically resides in Allen County and drives the area, Mark Urock, lives in the Cummings Community and is on the board as a chairperson. Betty Fisher also on the board, the vice chair, and then Shannon Neal is on the board, it's a representative. So, and extension board, we've got nine persons on the actual administrative board, executive board, and they set and pondered budget and put forth ideas, suggestions and figuring, and I'll let Mark, if you want to go.
I'll go first, just that this, this is an executive summary to kind of give you the highlights of the budget proposal, just to single them out, so the two thousand and three budget, we do have an allocation for two agents and both of the agents would be hired in twenty twenty three, one for the start of the calendar year, since January one, they come on board, and the other lining up with Ray's retirement date, which is sometime in twenty twenty three, we don't know yet and decided as to the date of his retirement. Two agents would allow us to better serve the constituents of Atchison County and allow us to have a specialist versus generalist, and what I mean by that is Ray right now as a generalist, we're asking him to do everything right for the, all the P D Cs and the objectives that they have. So he has to cover things like agriculture as well as consumer sciences and for H and youth and community vitality. So that's just a lot to ask from one agent for the size of the county's population that we have. So, and if we go to, to the agents, we could have more specialists, which, give me an example, you could have somebody that's maybe trained in agriculture, has education in agriculture, can focus that in the state or in the county, which, which is an important industry. And the other would be probably for H and youth, I mean, those would be the two that I would throw out as being somebody you'd want a specialist for. And two agents would better allow us to do that. It allow us to increase the quality and quantity of the programming, and that's why the board recommends two agents. It also would make us more attractive as a potential partner and districting, bringing more to the party. I think Carla can talk about that a second, but she's approached some of the other counties in the area to see what the receptivity is to do that, but certainly two agents helps that process. The new county office will be live starting June first, twenty twenty two, so tomorrow, we'll be in our new office in Lancaster, and it does provide a much more professional environment for the agents, which should help us in recruiting these agents that we're trying to hire. And it does give us an expected cost savings versus the rent and utilities that we were paying at the other facility, along with being just more of a pleasant environment to work in. The new office also has room for administrative assistant, which is in the budget, and we are asking in the budget also for cell phones, which really becoming a standard for employees, if you want to hire high quality professionals. And then the county is currently without vehicle, I don't know if you knew that, but we had transmission problems, two hundred and some thousand miles on the vehicle. We sold it and right now Ray is using his personal vehicle, so we can go either way of buying a new one, but we didn't budget for that, we budgeted as lease, which would be around five hundred dollars per month. And then we would also request, you know, outside the budget, the capital request that's normally done outside of it. So that's kind of a, the highlights of the budget, if you sort through, that, that's, that are driving some of the changes. And I would just remind you that the agents are partially funded by K State, so we, we don't, as a county, pay for their complete salary and benefits, yeah. Do you want to mention anything or district name?
I have a, we met recently with Brown and Donovan Counties and there's some interest there, but I would, I think that if you all had colleagues in those counties, it might be worthwhile to discuss with them and see what some of their interests might be. Currently Donovan County is one agent, and all three counties are allocated two positions from K State. We'll support two positions. Currently Donovan County has one agent, Brown County has one agent, and Ray is one person now, so I would like to see every office filled to capacity, because I think the need is here. I started in this role June first, and it's been obvious to me that folks in Atchison County support extension and are very passionate about four H and agriculture and family consumer science programming. But it's been a challenging year, maybe to say the least, for this board, they work really hard. It's, it's been admirable, most boards don't face the kind of challenges that they have, and they've worked really hard, which they, people like I said are passionate about Atchison County, and I want to see us fully support that to the capabilities that are here.
You support how much salary?
Um, I'm not certain what the percentage is.
What about dollar figure?
Yeah. Sixteen dollars. And some of the benefits, yes, all that, the agents are considered, they, their payroll comes through the state, so they're on the state Blue Cross Blue Shield as well as the retirement programs that are offered through the state, they're not capers.
You're giving them fifty, let's just say, a practical couple of sixty pounds of benefits. Is the?
Yeah, it's thirty seven thousand, eight oh four. Divided by two, so.
Seventeen thousand.
Plus the benefit, part of the benefit.
And the benefits are on top.
Correct. That's right.
And they're paid by the state?
Yes, through the state by the university, because extension receives federal, state, and local dollars to support the program. That's part of the.
They don't have to pay either.
Who doesn't?
Does the agent have to pay?
Do they?
Yeah.
Go pay or?
Yeah. Yes.
So they, they do pay for benefits themselves?
Yeah, like, we contribute a certain amount to our retirement and the state matches it, we all pay an amount for our health insurance based on whether you're individual or you're a family, you know, that's all different tiers.
Yeah, it sounded like you said they were paying it by the.
No, not fully funded, but it's part of that, that system.
I, I just want to stay consistent with all of our appropriations. Extension falls under its mandatory through K S A two dash six, ten, to provide programming, extension work. I was just curious. So there is potential partnership, like, there's interest in, in districting, you've started those conversations.
But middle are Leavenworth and then Brown's awesome, right?
Yeah, okay, awesome. I mean, I feel like I've followed you from the turmoil that we went through last year and, and followed along just at what you guys are doing. I don't feel like as a commissioner, it's our job to micromanage what you guys are doing as a board. Speaking of that, could you say who your board members are? And also, are you guys part of the Atchison Community Foundation?
Yes.
Okay.
We are, I went to the matching funds breakfast, what was that, Thursday?
Okay.
Yeah. Anyway, it was last week.
So Kathy Higley would be the secretary, Carrie Bowman is on the board.
Yeah.
Alan Wilson is on the board, Charlie Purdue is the treasurer, Laura Shaw Young would all.
Linda Meyer and of course Shannon, so there's nine of us.
Thank you for, for saying that, just so the public knows who serves on the board. But again, I think Atchison County kind of came and, and gave us as commission a push last year. Right, wrong, or indifferent, it, it, that's how it went, and again, following your progress along, just within a year. I have heard great things from the community of what you guys are doing and the direction you're heading and everybody. I mean, I appreciate all of the communication that we've had for you, or with you throughout the year. I know you and I had learned about the capital outlay, didn't know that last year, going through the budget season that we have to specify that amount separately for what you, you guys are looking to do with whatever the vehicle situation or different things. But I would just say again, we're here to support you and appreciate all the work you guys have put in, because I know it hasn't been easy at all.
Yeah, I would just say that it's beyond the board, all of our P D C members, which make up those committees that did the program recommendations, and then I even, non, you just volunteers from the community, I mean, if you look at the office and getting it cleaned out and, and moving, there was tremendous amount of volunteer effort. And all of us are volunteers, but what we've gotten done is primarily volunteers. Now, whether that's sustainable with only one agent, only time would tell, but we think with two agents, you're, we're going to be able to create more enthusiasm for more volunteers.
Um, question as far as districting goes, because I know last year that was one of the goals that the board has had for a while. And then conversations I had had with other counties, you know, some of the things they looked at was, was the agent different, differentiating or, or, you know, specializing, thank you, that, and then also the budget and knowing, you know, that all goes hand in hand of how you look to be attractive when, when looking at that. So do you feel like having two agents will make us more attractive? And then in your two agents, would you, like, if we don't, if we're just looking at what your goals are now with two agents in Atchison County, would you differentiate them too, as far as, but you're specialized in everything, like, you're a generalist, so you're like, you, you know all of it, Ray, but is there something in particular you're looking at to focus on with, with entire of another agent?
Oh, traditionally, in extension, it's been extension as well as the family consumer sciences, there certainly are many, many family issues of Atchison County, and as Carla will point out, as far as you specialized, in Leavenworth County, they would have agriculture and the consumer science, and they do have that youth development as a specialty. So even as you break that into a district, an agriculture specialty, if you had multiple agents in that, one potentially becomes a crops, horticulture, one becomes, potentially becomes that livestock advisor specialist. So it's that specialization, and it really does depend on how many staff, people you have within a district, what those specializations become, so if you had multiple family consumer science, usually one would have family nutrition, and the other could be education, finance, leadership development, so as boards, district boards do that, oh, thinking as far as the priorities for their district needs, they will potentially say, okay, we want a horticulture slash agricultural agent. So it, it's that concept that you think about, yes, you are specialized, that if I was truly the horticulture specialist for H and youth development, youth development is handled by that person in their specialty area. Which then you assume becomes a much deeper, richer providing of a service to those persons.
And in twenty twenty, when we were, during COVID, K State implemented a hiring freeze, and so that was lifted last July, and so I have done a lot of hiring since then for the eastern region. And we're seeing stronger candidate pools in districts, because I think graduates are interested in focusing on the area that they study, not being a generalist. I was an ag agent generalist, just like Ray, and it's a lot of fun and no two days are the same. But I think the young people that we see coming out of the university now are saying, I have a degree in horticulture, that's what I want to do is horticulture work, I don't want to do four H and go to four H camp and those kind of things. And so it's becomes increasingly. And so it's becomes increasingly easier to fill candidate pools in districts as well. Thank you.
One observation, your vehicle that was well worn out, have you changed policies so now that the agents can't use that van or vehicle for personal use?
But it never could use it for personal use.
It will, it had been used for personal use and nobody ever called.
Know that to be true or not true.
Current board.
Current vote.
Is not allowed.
Okay, so there is been a policy change to address that.
There's been interpretation change to address that.
Well, because I mean, that was, I mean, any observation would know that that.
I heard about that as well.
Okay, I heard about it, but.
I would suggest a policy to address that.
There's.
And the use of.
Yeah, there is. I mean, it's, it's on us as the board to enforce it.
Okay.
So it will be enforced.
Okay, I didn't know if there was a policy or was not, or there should be.
There's a policy of K State, yeah. Six, a year ago, how many new board members do you have? Out of nine? How many new board members in? It's only.
Just my so.
Kathy and so six out of nine.
Yeah.
We're working together to make sure we're.
And you gotta remember that the term before was COVID, when every meeting that I, I think every meeting was virtual.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And I don't know that that ever came up as a topic until very late in the year.
Yeah. I don't know what your event was, but it was probably started at the beginning of that when that was purchased, so.
I mean, we, I don't support and then I'm not aware of the policy, but it shouldn't be used for personal use.
There has to be something with K State, like whenever I was in graduate school, like, I mean, couldn't take the university thing.
Okay. Uh, I have another request and that is for the tax ID number for you to be supplied to the county clerk. I think that anyone that is taking donations from us should be able to, we should be have a verified tax ID number. The treasurer had different tax ID numbers and they turned out to be either discontinued or non-existent. And I, to this day, I don't know whether he's gotten the correct current tax ID number for that. So I think that that needs to be supplied to the clerk.
Agreed. And I think Charlie met with them last week, you talking about the Ashton Community Foundation Fund or?
No, I mean, just your.
That's your tax ID number.
Your tax.
I think they use a tax ID number, E I M number for that, but he was working on trying to sort through that. There was Ray, I don't know if he ever got to the bottom, you know.
I thought it was getting pretty close. As far as extension has one tax ID number, so Michelle needs it or, that's not it.
Okay.
I mean, I just. I mean, it's nice that you let us know that is a request because previously nobody ever says, hey, we're the tax ID number.
Sure, right. I know, I'm, this is the first, it's been requested that. As I had been to a meeting and I heard some things there, you know, and it is a little disconcerting. And it's like, I think that for us being responsible there, that if we're providing funds, that I think that we ought to make sure.
Absolutely.
Check.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
And you mean to Michelle's office.
Yes, not, not to be personal. But, you know, we can verify that, you know, Michelle, once she gets it, then that's everything's kosher.
Only other thing I have is specifying how much you want for capital outline. Because we have it as zero right now and I just want to make sure, because from what I've learned since last year is we need to specify that in this meeting to say budget request this and capital outlay this. So.
So there, we've requested a vehicle based on a lease. Now, if that's not, if you think it's better for us to actually own the vehicle, then we would put that into the capital outlay, I would believe, as well as, you know, potential for a new copier and then I think new computers for next year as well, so.
So it's within your request that we'll just split out some for those or it'd be above and beyond your.
It would be above and beyond, it'd be separate outlay.
Okay.
But, but you know, somewhat the driver would be there, the vehicle, do we lease it or do we buy one outright? And if we buy it outright, then that I would suggest that go to the capital side of things.
Well, and I think that could, I mean, should be a board decision for you guys. I mean, personally, I'm always own over lease when you're, yeah, I mean, it's an asset.
Five hundred dollars a month versus twenty thousand dollars for the year, I think, trying to compromise with the budget.
Yeah, it looks like.
Maybe just for a year.
Is it a?
And the amount of use, but it's.
I don't know how much you use it or.
Generally, I have a minivan because they like for the four H and you, you're transporting the various events of this, say the state fair or camp, Rock Springs, whatever. So generally minivan, something like SUV possibly, but a minivan.
So they probably do not come forward today with this is the five thousand dollar capital like that historically extension had been receiving from the county. So they'll be meeting next Sunday. And so whether that's discussion as far as capital lineup, if you need something today in print as far as capital outlay requests.
I think I, I just know we have to have that. So even if you meet and get your capital outlay number and come back to an afternoon meeting, might be a good thing and and request it there. I just, this one of the things I learned, we did wrong last year, so I want to make sure we get it right this year with what your needs are.
I mean, some of it would be visible, but we know what it was, but there are always potential things that could happen, a copier shoots scraps or something like that where you'd like to have a contingency and if you don't spend it, obviously goes back and has, it's gone back to the general fund in the past, so. But in the case of the vehicle, yeah, we definitely could get that lined up plus the computers. I think we'd have a pretty good idea.
I think when they hire new agents, new, new computers will just be necessary and a sustainable vehicle and an office professional that is full time working in the office with them. And these are great, but you know that already.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Come back with capital outlay proposals.
Do you want to let you request a time on the meeting or just come back?
I mean, do you have to have it in at a meeting or can it just be given as a supplement or amendment?
That's up to the chairman.
I think it just supplement would be.
Double check on that.
Yeah, I'm nothing.
We'll double check on that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's fine, that's fine with me, but if we find out any different, we'll know.
And by the way, I want to invite you, if you can make it on a six, we have kind of an informal opening at the Lancaster facility, which is at five o'clock roughly. We hope to have the globe there, the, and maybe show up in the paper with the, with the new signage and and we can give you a quick tour, it won't take that long, but it'd be good. It's with a two oh one Broadway, North Broadway.
Schultz Insurance.
That's next Monday.
At from five to six and we'll have a meeting at six o'clock in the new. It might be a stand, standing room only, bring your own chair.
If it's nice, have it on Main Street.
There we go.
Have a street dance, have a. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
County Council updates.
I don't have anything.
Executive session. Which one will be? I'll make a motion for executive session. I'll move at the Board of County Commissioners recess and executive session at forty P M for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship is allowed by K S A seventy five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of the accession at one fifty P M on the Zoom platform or in the commission room, courthouse basement or emergency operations center. Well, it's got all three of them, sorry. Coming out of executive session at one fifty P M in the commission room of the courthouse in the basement. And those present will be the three commissioners and Pat Henderson County Council. Right or second?
Well, second, I'd like to have an amendment.
Okay.
I might just have one forty two. One fifty two. Cause seven is already passed.
I said it was started at one forty and.
But it's already one forty two.
Okay, so one forty two to one fifty two. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public comment. Same.
No, not today.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? And move a second into adjourn, all in favor say aye. We were adjourned.
Another, I noticed a lot of diesel prices.